Good evening. My name is Eric Lynch from, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is Wednesday, October 22nd, and the time is 6:39 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to apply in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's Hubbard meeting. Please enter here or present, starting myself, Eric Lynch from chairman. Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman, is not here. Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart, Professional Engineer, is here. Benjamin Sabia is on his way. Paul Fernandez is not here. Mark Zamary.
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher is not present. Andrew Brodmann, Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer.
Here.
Okay, before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, you will automatically be muted and unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting, please use the raise hand function. If you are participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand feature. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. The video feature has also been disabled for public participation. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. Meeting will then be open for public comment. I ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any all comments pro, in opposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetland-related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
At this time, we'll call for general public participation. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to come up and speak in a general sense? Come on up, please stick your name and address for the record.
Let's see another.
No plan?
Yeah. I had mine. No, I'm okay with mine, just in case any. Generic question, just because trying to find this stuff. When we've got new septic, when it comes to leaching fields in the house, additional or whatever they call it, how far is our setback from wetlands? I couldn't find it online.
How far is, say it again, pose the question again.
So, when you've got a primary septic area and a reserve septic area, how far are those per our guidelines on being from those wetland buffers? Which is something I never learned, and I'm curious.
Okay, well, it's gotta be.
Next meeting's fine.
The health department's gonna regulate how far they are from there. We don't have, we don't have a fine guideline telling people, I mean, if they're in the setback area, they're in the.
If it's in the upland review area.
Then we get to review it.
Gotcha. Okay, I just.
Generally, when you design them, there's a depth to groundwater. So if you, if you're near wetlands, you've got the groundwater problem and you can't really.
Gotcha, okay. That was my question.
Right.
Is it satisfactory, if you want us to?
Yes. No, actually, that makes sense.
Uh, anybody else in chambers? Is there anybody online that would like to come up and speak in a general language?
Uh, there is nobody online.
Nobody online, okay. Then moving on to regulated activities. So we have, um, no determinations. So then we have what looks like a subdivision referral for eighty-three Head of Town Road, S U B dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, file number one six seven two. This application is in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission as part of the application. Report is required for the Inland Wetlands Commission on the implications of the subdivision and re-subdivision.
This was in your packet. It's a re-subdivision application, and as part of that, they need, as part of the subdivision, they need to prove out that the subdivision, there's still buildable lots. So the proposal that you see there, the proposed building, uh, they have no intentions of building. It's a, it's a family subdivision. There's a lot line adjustment, adding some acreage to Lot One, and separating the two properties.
Right.
And the reason why it's in front of us is because there's extensive wetlands on the property. So what they've proved out with their proposal over there is that the lot can be built without encroaching to wet.
Right, okay. You happen to notice anything that concerned you while looking at it?
No, there was nothing concerning, um, if the proposed development of that property was as it's shown right there, there wouldn't be any, uh, there would be no concerns. If that were to change.
Right, well, it's different. It's all gonna come before us anyway.
Right. So it would come before us for, for approval.
Anyway, right. Yeah, so just looking to subdivide it and see if we're generally okay with it.
Exactly.
So Lot One and Lot Two are currently developed as shown, and they're, and they're just saying, okay, this is a lot, the remaining land can be developed, and it's all outside the hundred foot up in the view.
Correct.
But because it's subdivision and there is some associated wetlands, that's why it's before us.
It's before us because of all the wetlands that are on the property.
Right.
So Planning and Zoning needs a positive referral from us, saying that we approve the plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions?
I'm just trying to catch up here.
Yep.
What is it, what do we need, what do we need to get this forward tonight?
Just a referral, alright?
It's a referral, it's a positive referral, so we need a motion. If you, if you look upon this favorably, we need a motion to, uh, issue a positive subdivision and re-subdivision report for S U B twenty twenty-five dash oh eight.
And I'm sorry, I might have been confusing stuff. It only involves existing Lot One being redeveloped?
There's no, there's no, right now, it's just in front of us for a, um, a potential, well, it's a subdivision, but in order to get a refer, in order to get the subdivision, the lots need to be, uh, it needs to be proved out that they can be developed upon. And do you see where it says, uh, proposed building?
This is just concept at this point.
That's, that's in concept.
Yeah, well, in concept, I don't think that I have any, I need more information to really make any, make a determination, so I don't really have, I haven't studied it, so I can't comment that I've got a problem with it yet.
Yeah, we're, right, it'll be.
No question.
It'll be put for us if and when they do decide to finally develop it. It's now just a.
If they're within the hundred foot up in the view area.
If they're within the hundred, the upland review area, it would come to us. But there is no, there's no intention of, of developing this. It just needed to be proved out that it could be in the future.
Or to sub, create the subdivision.
But right now, there is an existing conservation easement, or some of them.
Some of them, yes.
Again, I.
The proposed, but the proposed development takes that into consideration.
Back to conceptually, I can't say, well, anything, I can't. Thank you.
Any questions at this time?
No.
Okay, so, someone wants to make a motion?
Motion to give a positive referral for subdivision twenty twenty-five oh eight, file sixteen seventy-two, eighty, Head of Town Road.
One quick question. When did we get this exhibit?
This was in your packets.
Out of my house?
Yes.
But this is, yeah.
I delivered that on Friday.
Continue with your motion.
Thank you.
A second, a second.
We have a motion for positive referral. We have a second. All in favor? Right? Unanimous? So moving on to regular meetings, we have I W C twenty twenty-five oh six, file number fifteen fifty-four, two sixty-one Moose Hill Road, proposed construction of single-family residence and land clearing within upland review area.
Jim, before you get started, let me just, uh, read the exhibits into record. We got some late, we got some late submittals today, um, so those, um, I just wanna read them into record, but we did get some late submittals that you did not see until tonight. Uh, the plan that you have on your desk is one of the submittals that came in about three o'clock today.
I didn't see revision sheet, uh, too. I'm not sure what the difference is.
And Sabia walks.
Yeah, what the record show, Commissioner Sabia is joining the need to develop.
Six fifty.
Six fifty-two.
Six fifty-two, okay. Uh, so with I W C twenty twenty-five oh six, we have exhibit number one, which is, which was received in on October first, application and plans by Bombaro and Associates. Exhibit number two was a, was submitted on October first, and that was a preliminary review, um, presented by me, Andrew Brodmann, the Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer. Exhibit number three was received in October eighth, and that was the engineer's comments submitted by James De Mayo, town engineer. Exhibit number four received in October fourteenth was a letter of permission for the site walk that was presented by Gregory Steiner. Exhibit number five received in October fourteenth was a photo with the address sign clearly depicted at the property, and that was presented by James Fracker. Exhibit number six is received in on October twentieth, and it is the planting plan, and that was, that was presented by James Fracker as well. Uh, exhibit number seven received in today, October twenty-second, was a revised site plan presented or, uh, by Bombaro and Associates. And exhibit number eight received in today, October twenty-second, was the health department comments submitted by Samantha Frasili. And those are all the exhibits. James Fracker is the applicant, and he is here tonight to present. Uh, his representative is, uh, stuck in traffic, so he'll get started, and here is his representative right now. You're off the hook.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Jim Fracker, partner with Louis Vaz. We're asking this commission to grant permission to build a single family house, four bedroom, two-car attached garage, uh, the home we serviced with city water. We have a designed septic system, the acquired storm detention system, which will be approved by the town engineer. Our plan stays one hundred percent out of any wetland area. There will be zero activity in wetlands. To delineate the wetlands, we are proposing a stacked stone wall at the line of disturbance with wetland markers every seventy-five feet, as directed by the town. Uh, we also propose in this application plantings, we're proposing thirty shrubs along the wall behind the home, and five two-plus dogwood trees, two-plus inch dogwood trees along the There'll be a minimal amount of filling, and, and every precaution we may have to disturb the wetland at all.
Can I ask, uh, revision, that was, uh, I have, I looked at September twenty-fifth, it says revised October seventh and the twenty-first. Can you explain the differences between the two? I don't see revision block.
Who's meeting tonight is Paul Bombaro, Bombaro Associates. I think you can answer that question quick.
Yeah, you wanna use a flash drive? There is a mouse, if that's easier, right behind the, uh, right behind the laptop.
Yeah, I might be okay.
Okay. Are all of those files for this project?
No.
It doesn't match your left. It's not.
Not the dogwoods.
And help them out.
It's, uh, sort of scientists.
Probably best for me to go. The only change is. The, uh, management area right here, with three, three additional units for the coltechs. Yeah, the trees notated, and, um, this tree is possibly can remain, and only the ones along the, the straight line, uh, potentially could remain, uh, the ramps will have. This is a tree. Well, that's not gonna. Everything within the.
Mouse pointer.
Uh, can we, you guys are having a conversation over there without, we can't, no, I know, but let's, if you can go back to the microphone, maybe use the mouse pointer, cause.
Plus, if there's anybody online.
Right, you know.
If one other recording will be better.
Yeah, recording will be better, too, so.
It would help if there was a ledge, this ledge.
No, I'm with you, so we can certainly go through what, what was before, what is now, and highlight what's different.
Okay, so these are the trees that can remain along the street line. All the other trees, uh, would need to be removed. One, uh, on this side.
You, if you just scroll down, it'll probably, uh.
Yeah, you zoom in.
I don't know how people do this.
I could shed some light on the, uh, question that you had, but the difference between the two plans are based on, uh, the engineer's comments, uh, the original submission that you have. The underground, uh, retention system was not large enough to handle, the calculation was not correct. So the engineer picked up, uh, and needed to add to the coltech system to accommodate all of the impervious surfaces on the property. Um, it also, on the original submission, uh, it wasn't exactly clear as to which trees were going and which trees were to remain. So when you look at the new submittal that you're just looking at for the first time tonight, you'll see those couple of changes.
So which, which trees out of the seven that are significant, which, which ones are, they're, they're not identified as any different on this new drawing?
Oh, they're, on the plan that, uh, revised plan, it does say, uh, possible tree to remain.
One, two, three.
But this, this one possibly could remain, and like I said, along the street line, they can possibly.
Yeah. Okay, so there's three of them on the front.
There's three or four of them that may remain.
Yeah, is that what the P T T R?
Actually, you have to turn the, you have to turn your drawing this way, because it's, it's.
No, I understand that, I'm just trying to.
It's clear.
Now, I know, I mean.
The driveway, there's one large one for the driveway, there's one next to the driveway, and there's one in the front yard.
Yep.
You guys keeping that one in the front yard, huh?
No, they, there could be significant amount of grading, and some of the trees that are, are large and, and they're fork shaped.
This one is, no, but this one is big.
Wouldn't be hazardous for the, uh, the home if they ever fell, you know? If it was bigger lot and we're, you know, away from the house.
Yeah, I understand. Go ahead. So, um, your wetlands, uh, soil scientist?
The manager?
Yeah. On-site told to be disturbed through most of the upland plains, which were fixed, filled many day, many decades ago, Dixon Tumuso wrote, and we also, in the site visit, Andrew noted that the rocks have been deposited in the upper area and have created connection crannies, and mostly likely homes for wildlife, although, you know, the wildlife didn't like us, so, um, there was scat and other deer tracks and stuff in the area. So, you know, so the area that we're going, maybe you can explain to me how, how you're gonna not disturb, or how are you gonna minimize disturbance? The area that we're talking about, and specifically for the house, and, uh, a lot of it, there's, there's, so there's a lot of rocks, and it looks like these rocks, and then there's soil on top of it, and a number, number of the, there's holes where the water has drained through the rocks, but you can see the rocks underneath. I noticed a hubcap from a sixty-five Rambler, so I think it was probably fifty years ago that that was done. It was between two rocks, couldn't have been, I'm not, you know, just, I'm not a, a investigator in my private life, but about fifty years ago, it was significant. So you've got a lot of rocks underneath, and you got a lot of rocks shown. How are you gonna, you gonna put a basement in here in this house, or is it just a slab?
It's gonna take some effort to do it, because like you say, it's a large rock. We'll need to get a large machine in there to, to deal with those rocks. Uh, some of the, we went, our test wells went down. Yeah, on the, four feet down, and we're hitting good soil, so we're assuming that's what's on the other side.
Yeah, but you, you understand, it is, it is a significant effort you're putting into this area to clear those rocks, and you're gonna have to cart some of out. I don't know.
We're, we're proposing to build a stacked wall.
Uh-huh.
Trying to avoid disturbance.
I, I applaud that idea, sir, I think that's a.
We'd like to do with them.
You have a, you have a, an outcrop, I'm sorry, you guys weren't with, but, but the way I see it, and I probably should have written up a site visit, but what you have is, is you have this, uh, this area that was described in, in the upland area, um, and, uh, just beyond that, it drops right off. You can see the, you can see the, the lines here. So when it gets down to four thirty-four, that's wetlands. And so it just naturally, there's a lot of rocks on that, and you hopefully, hopefully you won't get that far, although I gotta tell you, um, on the corner of the deck, and you saw this, that there was, it was arms-length for me between a wetland marker and, and the corner of the deck, and that, that's a bit close. I wish you put the deck, uh, maybe on the eastern side, or.
The other side didn't seem to work very well either. Uh, we could slide it a little bit maybe, but, uh, it's tight, it's tight, limited disturbance.
You got the deck, say, 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 mark as the deck, you got the, that's the wetlands.
You were on the deck, I think you heard, the limit of disturbance is the flag you're reaching out to.
Say the corner of the deck, I showed it.
I'm looking at the map here, it says it's fifteen plus feet from one corner and seventeen from the other.
I saw that to, to the wetland line, but I'm telling you, that line, four thirty-four that drops down, that, that's the same as the west and the west. So, um, and, and I'm telling you, one, the guy saw it, I had one at the corner of the deck, and one said wet. And I'm just, I'm just making, I'm making a point that.
Oh, is this, is the drawing inaccurate?
Yes, fifteen feet is not correct.
There might have been a mis-marked, uh, the limited disturbance in five feet. I don't know if it was a flag. There was no flag, there was no flag out there. Cause we, we had to mark the limited disturbance also with the silvers.
I think the limit of, the difference between the limit of disturbance and the wetlands is only five feet. I mean, that's, they're showing.
My desire is that that deck. My desire is that that deck. Reconsidered.
Well, it can be slid, slid toward the garage side.
Right, you know, you have the proposed driveway, it makes that turn, what about on the eastern or western sides of the home? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I, using.
Again, I mean, that is a possibility.
I just think the deck is like, right there, arch deck, there's the wetlands, that's, that's the kind of distance.
Okay, and so what's your concern with the deck being that close?
Well, being that close and, and having big rocks and things like that, you're gonna have difficulties not making more disturbance into the wetlands. I, I applaud the wall, I, I know that you're gonna have, you know, it, it walks, the rocks, rocks can roll and you're gonna have possibly some issues there, but that wall is, is key, I, I.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're concerned with, is it the footings for the deck? What, what about the deck is?
It's too close to the.
Yeah, I know, but what is, what is your concern with it being that close?
If I may, because I was, I was on the sidewalk, to Commissioner Smith's point, where the corner was where one of the decks is, is it just drops straight down? And maybe with, with looking at that structurally, I mean, you'd have to tear off, you'd have to do some work in order to prevent that deck from eventually either the ground eroding away from it, because I mean, like, like he said, it's, it's not that far from where the deck was to just a straight drop where these giant blocks are.
Well, it'd be a twelve foot deck, it'd show, we can cut it back to ten, which means the footings would be eight feet.
Right.
That helps, it's, we're gonna have a two foot overhang beyond. It's actually six.
So, so pulls that, that pier.
It needs to come away, I think it needs to come away from where the footing.
We could also shift that deck towards the garage.
Right.
Also.
Right.
So, I, I think that's where we're getting at is, that's why I was just trying to understand what was the concern, not just, hey, it's too close.
I don't think shifting the deck is gonna do, it's gonna make it closer if you're, if you're concerned about it being too close, it's, it's just gonna get closer.
Well, it could be a bounce between seventeen, seventeen.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
That's the best we can do.
What, what is the elevation from the first floor to the ground level at that point?
It should be around eight feet.
Five.
Be about eight foot. I can't really tell until we get in there and start.
Four thirty-six.
Yeah, no, that's on.
Basement floor is four thirty-six, so it's nine feet down. Right?
The elevation of the basement floor is basically, so it's a walkout basement towards the back?
It's a walkout basement.
Okay.
Four thirty-six.
Yeah.
Wetlands is four thirty-four.
I see wetlands being four thirty-two.
Um, so it's the line that goes past the, this black, the wall. Maybe you could point to it, but.
I see the four thirty-four here.
This is seven, seven. This is four thirty-four.
Three forty-four.
Right behind that wall.
Yeah.
Well, the, the concern you have, I want to make sure I understand it correctly, is you're worried that they won't be able to get this deck constructed without going beyond the current limit of disturbance.
My, my concern is that they're, they're putting living space, human living space, within close proximity of a wetlands that drops off.
So, is, is there any concern that the actual dwelling is only twenty-two feet from wetlands? That's, that's another, right, so I mean, we're talking about the deck, but.
Right.
The dwelling is still not.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out what, what is it about the deck that is causing the concern? I know, I understand you're saying that there's the drop.
Touching on the wetlands.
Oh, I understand that. It's not touching the wetlands.
Right.
So how, how is that deck going to affect the wetlands, other than that it's close?
Human living space.
Well, it's a deck, not living space.
I mean, I, I think Commissioner Sabi has said it right, where it's just, uh. You know, because it's such a drop, drop off, it's just hazardous to people living there, right? I think that's kind of maybe the same, is that the same thing we're getting at, right, you're, it's in the ballpark.
Well, the hazardous part doesn't, doesn't affect us. But there's a, a good question where, where it's gonna be a walkout basement, there's gonna be sliders or, or door or bulkhead.
Maybe go, we might have a two-step up.
Yeah.
Really depends.
Because there's no level area there for them to go to, see what I'm saying? Are you proposing to put anything, you know, you know what I'm saying? You're gonna walk out and you're gonna be on a.
It might have, it might be a two-step up out of the basement, I have to, I have to see once I get to that point.
You should, you should show whatever you're, you're proposing coming out of the basement, if it's gonna be a, you know, patio or a slab or a stoop, you should, you should.
Right. Right, because that's, that's another, you know, more using space near, right near the wetlands, within the upper view, right? And.
Right now, right now, we're showing a walkout, it's like a walkout with a slider. That's what it shows.
Where is that?
That's the, the grading.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't.
Well, you see, four thirty-six, the basement floor elevation is four thirty-six, and when you step out of the back of the house, you're stepping onto four thirty-six.
Right, so.
Well, I, I realize that, and it drops off to, it drops off right after there, so I'm, I'm just saying, if you're proposing to put a pad there or, or, or steps, or I think they should, you should show them on the plant, whatever they are. If you're planning on stepping out on ground, I guess you don't need to show anything, but.
That's the way it's, it's proposed now.
Step right on the, right on the dirt. I don't think the building inspector is gonna go for that.
We have to have a thirty-six.
Yeah, so I just think you need to show that.
Right.
That pad, whatever it is.
Well, it would be under the deck.
Oh, okay, you're gonna come out under the deck.
It doesn't, doesn't show any of that, would be nice if we saw kind of what your plan was, aspect of.
Is it, is it at all possible, and again, it, it might not be with rules and regulations, is it at all possible to move it? The, the proposed building down a little bit closer to the road so that it's further away from that?
And you got your setback line right there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you are right on the setback line.
How many square feet is the, is the house on, for a plan?
Twenty-four hundred.
That's the total house?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not, not. Not a, not a big house.
It's not big.
I mean, again, I'm gonna say the same thing again, right, just in fairness to them, is we're talking about the deck. But does anybody have an issue with the house itself? It's only seven more feet away from the wetlands and the.
I mean, might.
Let's not agonize, not as much if you have a problem with the house, right?
Yeah, I can say this from the sidewalk, okay, the observation from the sidewalk. There's this rock outcropping that's about thirty inches or so, okay? I don't know if it's a natural rock outcropping, or if it was deposited there many years ago, but it makes a very clear delineation, it follows, the, the limited disturbance follows that boulder. I'm gonna call it a boulder wall, it's not a boulder wall, it's a bunch of, of boulders that were either dumped there, but it creates, it, it creates not only a barrier, but it creates a drier area up top. And then you can clearly see the wetlands below, so, um, it follows that line very closely. The limit of disturbance as it is proposed, and Rick's concern about, and I think why Rick is, I'm sorry to speak for you, I think why Rick is so concerned about the deck is because it really approaches right up to that line. And in order to get any footings in there, in order to shore up this deck, those boulders are gonna need to be, you're gonna have to, you know, dig down and get footings in there and any kind of movement to that natural barrier. And there are a lot of voids in those, in those stones where, you know, it could be habitat, it could be a potential where, where sediment runs through and follows the voids and goes down into the wetlands. Um, so I think that's why, I think that's why he's focused on the proximity of the deck.
So, so there's no dwelling on the property now, right?
No, it's, it.
Yep, so if you're focused on that, you don't go as deep with a deck in the footings there as you will with the foundation of a house, right? So are you concerned about that even more so? Cause that'll go deeper and it's only seven more feet away from wetlands than that deck is. So are there concerns about the foundation of the house? Like, if you're concerned about that, let's forget talking about the deck, right? Right, cause the deck, you know, we should see it either not have it or move it.
See.
But if folks are concerned about.
I think, I think we also need to consider, I mean, he, they have a legal lot here.
Yeah.
They, and they have, so they have a right to develop it in some method.
Absolutely.
Right? And I, it's, it's residential, so they have a right to put a house on there, and I, and I agree with you, it's awful close. If they had more property, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be there, it's just, you know, what do you do? They're not putting a, they're not putting a three, thirty-six hundred square foot house in a four thousand square foot house, they can't move it closer to the road.
Right.
It's just, it's just, it's, it's just, you know, I think that you really need to work on, is the limit, you know, appropriate so that you make sure that they're not gonna be doing anything more. You know, you give them enough space to actually, you know, have a, have a yard and a house without cutting it back so far that you've just created a, a house on, on island and that's it, there's your, there's your yard, you got no place for, for, uh. I mean, really, you don't have a place for a swing set or anything.
Be nice, that's gonna be it, it's gonna be the front yard.
And there's no way to utilize that other portion of the, the lot.
To the, to the west?
It could be, with, with another, another round through the commission, they could develop.
If you looked at pushing the house that way.
Which way?
I mean, for.
Understood, but you looked at moving, trying to, I mean, I can't, I can't see a better way of organizing, I don't see any.
If you look at the two alternatives that were presented also, the two alternatives are far more.
So the rocks, you're saying the rocks along this limited disturbance are already there?
Yes.
The boulders?
Yes.
And you're talking about building more of a boulder wall, you're gonna put more boulders on top of it?
Actually followed the wetland flags where the beginning of the rocks are. They, they go right along the.
So they're along the wetland flag and then continue into the wetlands?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, we're coming, we are gonna build our wall inside of that.
Inside of those rocks? Do you have a detail of what it's, is it just gonna be a, a line of boulders?
It's gonna be a, a line of stacked boulders.
So you're gonna put one on top of another?
Might be two, two or so high.
So do you have a drawing of this, it's gonna be four feet wide by?
Just a loose rubble wall, right? Just stones.
So it's not gonna be big giant boulders, it's gonna be.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have a lot of big rock, I don't mean, sorry.
Okay.
Are you gonna break them apart, I mean, is that?
Good, right?
I'm just trying to, just so that when you're done, it, it looks like what, what we assumed it would look like.
We could break out, I can do.
Just, I'm, I'm looking for you guys to tell us what, you know what I mean? I was hoping to get a little drawing saying, okay, it's gonna be two by four, or it's gonna be eight feet wide and three feet high, I don't know what you're, what you're proposing, that's all I'm saying. And you have a limited clearing, if you end up building a six-foot wide rubble, rubble wall, which you can turn into pretty quickly if you're just throwing them there, then your, your space is eliminated. And the only other comment I'd have is, is you have wetland boundaries post, marker posts, but they're, but they're on the wetlands' flags, I assume? At least that's where the arrow goes.
That's, that's, that's the way it's depicted, yes.
So, I guess I would like, I'd like to see them in the, in the wall or, you know, in front of the wall or just there so that there's, you know, they actually see them versus.
I talked to Andrew about that, we, I was, we could either put a four by four posting, if there's not a tree to put a, uh, to put the mark on it.
Would you, would you be open to, um, putting a split rail fence around there so that it's more of a barrier? And the posts act as posts for the wetland markers?
Are they in a wall?
In addition to the wall?
In addition, yeah, in front of the wall.
Just a suggestion, I'd.
Early on, Jim, I, I did, I did investigate that a little bit with us tonight, but it's gonna be a heck of a job. And I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt that they're gonna be able to do some great work without using blasting. I hope. Uh, that they're gonna do a heck of a job, but it's clear to me, clear to his wetland scientist, and I, I'm telling you, it's about nineteen sixty-five, they came in and the road was here, if the road was even existing, but they, they filled in all of that area. It would have been a violation, but we weren't around. So we've got rock with some dirt put on top of it, and you guys are gonna have your jobs cut out, and I, it's, uh, it's a lot of work, so I, I appreciate that we, that you have land that we would like to allow you to build on. I share Mark's concern, but I, I know that I can't fight it with this commission, cause I, I, I'm sorry, I.
Right, no, but I, I think what we were saying though, I think we need to see a little more detail on, on the proposed wall. Let's get some more details other than just a dashed line that says wall, so I think.
And, and the plantings and.
The plantings and same thing, like the, the pad coming out from the basement and the, the slider, I think we just need to see a few more details and see, see what you can do with that deck, because clearly we have some concerns with, with the deck and the drop off and getting the, the footings in and all that.
Maybe you could, you could have the engineer, or you could do a cross section so I could see the house.
Right.
Here's the deck, and here's the, here's the drop off.
Right.
Here's the boulder wall we're proposing, here's the tree, you know what I mean? Something that's so.
Yeah, it's a little hard for us to figure out exactly what's going on in this back corner. Let's see what, what's really gonna happen.
Uh, could I get a list, to be fair to the applicant, I just wanna put together, I, I wanna just have it clear as to what we're asking him to additionally show, so the pad of the walkout basement, the detail of the boulder wall, a cross section.
Right.
Is there something else, planting, the?
Yeah, more detailed, I mean, right now, I don't, I assume it's the, the green, the green line?
That says the, right, that says the bushes.
Which is, you know, they're in the, they're in the, they're in, on top of the wall right now, so I'm, I'm just.
A detailed planting plan.
It would go in front.
In, in front of the wall.
Well, we can, I'll give you detail, we can give you better detail.
Yep.
I can give you an elevation, right side elevation.
Spots on the plan or something.
I'll give you a right side elevation that will show the side of the house, the deck, the grade and the rocks.
Yeah.
Certainly helps.
Does that work?
Are we, are we mandating that they need to keep the boulders there? Maybe they wanna move the boulders off property, right? I, I don't know, I mean, I think they're just saying that if we want them to leave them there, they'll, they'll build a wall, but maybe they don't wanna do that, maybe just the fence. Is that sufficient enough?
No, they're, they're showing a fence, they, they're proposing a fence, that's, I think, I think Andrew was.
No, no, there, there's no fence proposed, right? It's just a suggestion.
The black line is, the dark black dotted line is, is a boulder wall.
That's right. Yeah, it's a demarcation. What's our props along that, that limited disturbance, that's a demarcation for.
Is this, is this area back here, other than the, other than the wall and the trees, I know there's not a lot of space, is it gonna just be lawn back there, you just proposing to have lawn and, and have them cut it?
We can bring you in, we can give you, they can bring in a plan with, an option. We don't have to put, we can leave the rock that's there along the wetland flags, and we can come back to the line of disturbance and, and, and leave that, but we can do the split rail fence rather than any rocks, which might help keep it.
Unless the servants probably took, if they did that, but again, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll remove the rock, any rock I got that I have to remove, get it out there.
So to clarify, I thought early on when I talked about, uh, the, the, the rocks that you said, I, that you would replace the silt fence with, uh, the ra, a rock wall. Didn't you say you were gonna put in a rock wall?
Now, what he, what?
Are you gonna put in a rock?
What he said is, well, we could leave the rocks if, if we need to. He, he's not saying they want to do that. I think, I think his proposal is good. Like, I'll let him answer the question, but I think that's. We'll have a couple options.
It was in a rock, a rock stacked rock wall. No more than eighteen inches or so with, with the fill. And then it was gonna go down to what you saw down there.
So it's gonna be a retaining wall? Is that what you?
Not, not maybe. Two, it's gonna be a couple of rocks stacked behind.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's gonna keep you, the homeowner, from wandering deeper into the, towards the wetland. It was just a barrier. That could be replaced with a split rail fence if you want. I'm not, I'm not against.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I guess, back to my old comment about the, about the door, if it's a walkout basement, then you have to provide some area because if you don't, they're gonna wanna walk out there and, and have their barbecue or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Every, every house is, is a little different.
Yeah.
Right now, we have, we got a limited amount of space back. Some have more space in the back and less in the front.
Yeah.
And, and it's a, it's a beautiful piece of property for ours, okay?
Okay.
It'll, it'll fit in there really nice. Uh, but if the deck is a problem, I can shrink it. I can maybe, I can probably get an engineer so that I would have no posts going down the ground of all. Be free floating if we had to.
Can't believe.
That's a, that's a hell of a challenge there.
Yeah.
I think it's also just pertinent to the conversation here. Uh, during the site walk, just an observation was that, uh, the upper portion where the development is proposed, um, was predominantly, predominantly native trees, but the underbrush was predominantly, um, invasives, okay? Barberry and, uh, burning bush is predominantly what that flatter area is, um, is in that flatter area. The lower portion, so the, the, the wetland portion down there, you can see that some of that invasive species has been kinda working its way down a little bit, but when you stand up on top of that boulder wall and you look down, there's all native plants. So, um, there is some invasive starting, so the removing of those invasives I see is beneficial to the wetlands that are down there. So the development on the upper portion, um, I think has some, and I caution, I say some benefits to the wetlands that are there for the invasives. I think it's just worth noting to the conversation.
They have a plan to remove some of that invasive? Is that part?
Uh, well, their plan right now is during the development, all of that underbrush up to the limit of disturbance.
Right.
All of that comes out.
Right.
But in doing that, all of the native trees are also coming out.
Right.
Uh, which is why there's a mitigation plan with the planting of fifteen shrubs.
I guess what, I, in, in my ideal world, I would, I would say that this area would, would get, you know, completely planted all the way up to the foundation as a way of saying, you know, you don't go back there and you create a, an area where, where, patio or, you know, small patio back there and then it gets planted around, you know, in that way. People know it's not, it's not lawn, it's, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, it, it's a buffer area and it's planted and, and they're not back there with their lawn mowers and stuff and, and throwing leaves and stuff and then.
And I don't think it's a big ask of the commission to ask the applicant to do a little more invasive, um, removals that are in the wetlands.
Right.
That have worked their way down there. And I don't think that's a big ask of our mission if, if we're, if we're considering this.
Uh, we do have, we do have, when I say seven, when, when you said seven large trees, the, so I'm sorry to disagree with that. I, I, those are, I'm, we're talking.
They're significant, they're significant.
Having branches and, and/or limbs and stuff coming down, I get it, but it's near the wetland. It serves a real purpose. So I, I applaud what you're saying, Jim, that, you know, uh, just fill it in with something that's gonna try to take some of that water, that's evidently going to flow, uh, towards the house and into the wetlands. Can I continue about the wetlands? So, uh, I noticed and, and it's noted on here that you have a water course flow, uh, to the north of the, uh, site, uh, that goes towards the back. And it's, uh, photo five in your, your report for Mr. McManus also notes intermittent water course regulated wetlands, uh, view of intermittent water course regulated wetlands within the northeastern part of site. So that's it, that's in that area. So what I saw on the site walk was that, yeah, oh, there was this kind of a stream bed, but I also saw ponds of water. And I wonder if there's any vernal ponds on, and where they are on the property. Not that, I don't know if they're near, nearby the house or farther out there. I just.
I think Jim, Jim McMahon is sort of, uh, if he, there were any vernal pools, he would have pointed them out. That's what he does.
Well, he pointed out intermittent water course.
Oh, yeah, intermittent water course.
I saw water.
He didn't say anything that, uh, that spurred him to think of the vernal pools. Like, we can, we can ask him directly.
Please do that.
Yes.
The, the intermittent water course is the, the stormwater that's running off the road. That's, that's what's.
Yeah, I'm not a scientist. I don't know. I saw, what I know what I saw. I saw a, a very flat area with a lot of areas that, that could be, you know, frog mating ponds, if I was a frog.
So you would, so you would like the applicant to go to their wetland scientist and get an affidavit that they're, uh, reassurance that there are no vernal pools on the property?
Thank you.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so you have your list?
I have my list.
Okay, so let's go through that list again to make sure we're all.
Yep. And if there's anything else, let's, to be fair to the applicant, let's make sure that we, so when they come back, because the clock is ticking now and statutorily now, we only have one meeting in November, one meeting in December. The clock starts ticking now. They have sixty-five, we have sixty-five days to make a decision without an extension. That puts us at the very latest without an extension. That puts us to the December meeting, which I believe is December tenth. Uh, their sixty-five days runs out on the twelfth. So we're close to that if they need to come back again. So everybody knows, uh, asking the applicant to show details of a pad that, for the walkout basement. Showing a detail of the boulder wall and an explanation of what that boulder wall's going to be. A cross section from the wetlands up to the street.
Or up to the back of the house.
From the back of the house down into the wetlands, a cross section of what that would look like. A more detailed, uh, planting plan with more extensive mitigation as part of that planting plan. And an affidavit proving out that there are no, reassurance that there are no vernal pools on the property at all.
Would we?
Is there anything else?
So I also like the idea of, uh, removal of some of the invasives within a portion of the wetlands. Is this, is this a place to mention?
Yes, I would say that, uh, I would say that would be part of your mitigation plan. I think that you should, I, I think that that should include removal of invasives on the property.
I, I think that would be a, I think that would be a huge benefit to your application, so.
I mean, it's an eight acre property. I don't think it's, it's much to ask to remove invasives in eight acres. I mean, of course, down to the wetlands, you know what I mean? Down in, down to the, in that area, to the wetlands, yeah.
So I think it needs to be specific as to what the, what the commission is comfortable with.
Well, what method of mitigation are, are, is, you know?
That is, that is for them to come up with a mitigation plan that we would, that, that, that you're comfortable with. Typically, a mitigation plan is hand removal of invasive species and replanting of native species for one for one. So you're disturbing the ground by ripping out the barberry? You're putting a cleft root in its place.
That's exactly what I was, is the disturbance, uh, iron, I don't know if there's, is any ironwood?
Uh.
You gotta get the roots.
Did I see any ironwood? I did not, but I wasn't, uh.
Okay. Yeah, so please come back to us with a good plan. Does?
The only other thing I would.
We're gonna look for you to use a certified guide, apply them, but we prefer not using pesticides. I, I've talked myself, herbicides in the area.
He just mentioned hand removal.
Yeah, I know what he said. I'm just saying.
But the only other thing I would recommend, come back and say, well, can you? Just coming back with an option of either moving or resizing the deck and just see if there's a opportunity to. You already mentioned maybe cut it down to ten feet.
Need a way out of that the house somehow.
No, I understand. Right, that, right. I don't know, it can be
Something.
Gone completely, but maybe come up with an option or two for shifting.
Maybe make it.
Reduce it down to eight foot and make it longer.
Yeah.
To the wetlands from.
Really love to see it.
Eight foot deck.
Nice twenty by twenty foot.
You put a table out.
Yeah, but is this deck off of, is this deck off of an upper bedroom or is it off of the kitchen? It's off of the kitchen, so it's not.
Kitchen's in that corner?
It's off, off, off an eating area, yeah.
Could it go off to the north side? On that side yard?
On the.
He was just saying one of twenty by twenty on the north side.
Just, we're throwing out there.
Giving you ju, just different ideas.
We're throwing some ideas out there for you, that's all.
Here's another thought, just throw another idea out there. If you reduce it to eight feet or less, you come out the back of the house and you wrap around to the east side of the, the dwelling and then you could have a larger deck on the east side of the dwelling.
Yeah.
That's an option as well. I know it's a little more expensive probably to do a little bit of a wraparound that corner, but it looks like you have a lot more room over there where you could really expand the deck and then you just come out the back of the house and turn.
And I can, I can testify that, that works. I have a, my kitchen door goes out and it's just a few feet and it works really well. It's no problem. And then I have my sixteen by whatever deck.
All right.
So.
Sixteen?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I'm, I'm encouraging, I, I, I'd like a deck. I honestly, I'd sit on an eight foot deck or a French balcony. What?
Do we, any, anything else you wanna?
We haven't given guidance. I think we've given a sufficient guidance. I hope we've given guidance.
I can sum that up in an email and send that out to you and I'll be happy to do it tomorrow.
You guys have any other questions for us?
Maybe on Jim, these people are there. Getting, uh, there's people who know not to, so be there. Need some kind of swath through there for people to walk around the house. What are you kind of comfortable with?
Yeah, it's a stone path, I guess. I mean, I think that makes sense to have, just have a, have a path through there. Absolutely. You can, rocks. But I think it could be done, it could be done nicely. It's, it's, as a, as a, as a benefit so that, hey, you're living near wetlands and you, you're removing the invasives and you sit on your deck and you're looking to the wetlands. For that, I guess.
What is the plan underneath the deck as it is right now?
Someone who appreciates it.
Grab it. Right. All right, so our next meeting will continue us to the next meeting and our next meeting is November, oh boy, uh.
Next meeting is November twelfth.
November twelfth.
Right.
We'll continue this to the next meeting of November twelfth. Thanks guys for coming on.
Thank you very much.
Moving on all the way down to IWC agent activities report.
Thank you. Agent approvals. Agent approvals. Okay, so I issued a couple of agent approvals since our last meeting. IAA twenty-five dash twenty-eight, file number fifteen fifty-six is fifty-nine Nor Road. Um, it's a garage addition with a little bit of an expansion on the garage and adding a second story, um, with stormwater management. And it's all within the upper review area. They're proposing to, well, they propose to expand the garage two foot in one direction and five foot in the other direction. Uh, and then adding a second story. As part of this addition, they are adding a subterranean stormwater management, um, that is part of the proposal. And that is located approximately seventy feet away from the wetlands, so it's thirty feet into the upland review area. But the limit of disturbance is approximately thirty feet off of wetlands. So you're seventy feet into the upland review area with their limit of disturbance. If you have any questions on that before, I've got conditions of the approval. The conditions of the approval were to install a silt fence, pre and post-construction inspections, all excavated materials to be removed from the upland review area and wetland markers to be installed every seventy-five feet or so. Any questions? The second agent approval, uh, that I issued was IAA twenty-five dash twenty-nine, file number fifteen fifty-seven is eight Glenbrook Drive. It's, the proposal is to construct a twelve by twenty-four foot sunroom, which is replacing the existing patio. It is within the upland review area. The sunroom, uh, is located forty feet from an intermittent water course. So although it doesn't show, um, uh, potential wetlands, it, it's, by looking at it, you could see that there is an intermittent water course, which is what, uh, prompted the, uh, the, the agent approval for, uh, permit for wetlands. Uh, that intermittent water course from where this, uh, sunroom is supposed to be is approximately thirty feet and it's about thirty feet of lawn from the water course, which is a drainage swell to where the patio is existing right now. So the sunroom is taking place of the patio. Go ahead.
Patio material, current, uh, the, the previous patio, patio material, is it slab, slate?
Uh, no, it's, uh, paver stones.
Paver stones, so there's, there's the drainage between the paver stones?
Correct. However, even with that, um, in putting in a roof, uh, they, they were required to do stormwater management. So as part of this and within the limit of disturbance is a rain garden eight foot by, five foot by eight foot, one foot deep. Uh, the engineer, town, our town engineer took a look at it and, uh, approved the size for the impermeable surfaces.
Sounds appropriate.
Uh, conditions of their approval were silt fence with pre and post-construction inspections, wetland markers to be installed and the installation of a five foot by eight foot rain garden for stormwater management. That was all I had for agent approvals. No enforcement.
All right, I guess moving on down to general discussions. Um, I guess we have minutes from ten eight and then our special meeting, which is the site visit on ten fifteen.
Yeah, so, um, although I was not here in person, oh no, I wasn't here at all on ten eight. Um, I did watch the video and I believe we all received the minutes from, uh, you, you were all.
When was the video posted? Cause when I looked, it wasn't, it wasn't up there.
It was, it was up on ten nine.
I'll have to go back and look again. Maybe it's only posted to one portion of the site.
I'll, I'll send you, if I, I'll go and look for the link and I'll send it to you, yeah. It was only half. It seemed like only half was there at first and then all of a sudden it was, the rest of it was up.
Send me that link, cause there were two or three that I noticed weren't there. Send me that link because there were two or three that I noticed weren't there. So if they're only posting it to one portion of the site, but not another page on our site.
Yeah.
We'll have to let them know. You have to either remove one portion totally or add it to both.
Right. Yeah. Because I think I ended up having to find the other half at some point.
Gotcha.
And then and then at one point it was all together. I'd have to look to see if it's still there, but I'll send you the link if I can find it. Hence why I knew about the Moose Hill and going to the actual site visit. And then the minutes for, and I didn't see any issues with that with that minutes. I don't know if anybody had any issues. I believe Carrie sent the minutes to everybody for that.
For which, when did Carrie?
Ten eight.
Ten eight was good. Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't have a problem doing the approval for that one. And then the other one was just the special the special meeting for the site visit, which was myself, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Kelly and Andrew. And I went looked through that. I didn't see any issues. We need two separate moments. We'll need two.
First, on this two sixty-one, you don't, Carrie noted that there was a site visit. You didn't say anything about it. You just said post-construction of single family land clearing.
Yeah. I mean, that's how I knew that there was a site visit coming up and why, when Andrew reached out, why I wanted to go to that site visit.
Have you reflected in it?
Say it again?
Have you reflected in these minutes? The same same comments, similar comments. Carrie did a good job. I just would like a little more about two sixty-one. Can I can I can I ask that we maybe perhaps wait until Mark catches up and then we'll have a good quorum because it's only three of us. He can't, I assume that he might not vote.
He hasn't seen it.
Yeah.
We can table it.
Table.
We could table it.
No, no, it's fine. Yeah, we could table it. I don't we can.
Table ten eight?
And the ten fifteen special meeting one.
Yeah.
Table both.
Yeah.
Fine. Yeah, we could we could table both. Yeah.
You're great on this, Ben. Okay. You gotta fix it before you think about going someplace else.
Put a plus on there, please.
Okay. All right. You got a plus.
All right. I got you. We got you half a grade there.
Thank you.
All right. So.
All right. So we'll table both the minutes.
All right. Correspondence? And then our meeting scheduled for November and December?
And this was just to make sure everybody's, yeah, just to make sure everybody's aware. We have one meeting in November and it falls on the twelfth. November eleventh is actually a holiday. That's Veterans Day. So November twelfth is the meeting. And then there's one meeting in December, which is December tenth. So we've got holidays and things coming up. So I just want to make everybody aware that there's one meeting in each month.
Right. Okay. No, no thought to move that meeting on the twelfth? Before?
Uh, if we were to move it, it got in the way of. Is that what it was? Yes. No?
Next evening is two weeks after.
Yeah, it would be the nineteenth or the fifth. Yeah.
Would you would you want to move it?
What's wrong with the twelfth?
If everybody's good with it, I'll, well, that's fine.
No, no, it's fine.
I'm fine with the twelfth.
Yeah. Unless you happen to not be here.
I'll be here. I have other plans.
Veterans Day is on the eleventh. Oh, yeah, the old eleven, eleven, eleven thing. Yeah. Okay.
All right. All right. And then the last item on here, just I wanted the commission's advice. I know I've asked this before, but I was out at a property and it's not going to come to fruition. But he was asking, the ask was to have a number of trees cut down that were actually in wetlands, but it was most certainly for safety reasons. Okay. So there were five or six trees that were very large, very close. He has no backyard because of the wetlands. Maybe it's maybe there's fifteen feet of lawn and then it's all wetlands back there. So the ask was, can I take these six trees down? And in doing that, here was the rub for me was if I have somebody in there now taking these trees down, these other trees are going to start reaching out and become a problem as well. Okay? So now it went from six trees that I agree are safety concerns to thirty trees that could potentially be a safety concern.
Twenty years.
Right.
Okay, in in.
Right.
Whatever, fifteen years, ten years, twenty years. I, yeah.
Not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow. What I was tossing around, and I would certainly bring this to you before making that kind of a decision. But what I would think would be if he's willing to replant with native wetland trees that don't get sixty, eighty feet tall, would that be an acceptable, like, I would have brought that to you anyway. However, in doing that, he has to get the soils delineated. He has to get, you know, professionals involved and accrue professional fees with that. Would that be something that, you know, certainly you're replacing mature trees with young trees for safety reasons? I thought that was reasonable to, you know, if he's taken out twenty trees, if he's willing to replant twenty trees like I like I said. So I'm kind of, and again, this is not something that's going to come to us tomorrow, but it was something that I was scratching my head on and saying, would this be acceptable? So I'm just looking for all of your your advice on that.
I think that we can claim that a lot of trees are hazardous and I I want to lean towards allowing people to remove hazards, but in this case, if you gave him, if you looked at it and said, these can go, these are not such an urgent need, I would give it, I would think that I'd ask you guys to debate this, but I would say this is the alternative. You take the ones I told you, you come back to us later. Or you take the take the ones I, take the ones and take, you know, some of these others. You can leave some and and, you know, you can you can revise the plan to only take out fifteen of the thirty more or whatever it is, but come back with another plan that includes spending a little money for, you know, the, you know, and.
Okay. So that's sort of where I was at. For me, it was one of those two choices.
Right. And I think those choices are great.
No problem.
I I don't have a problem with your.
So you wouldn't have a problem with either of those decisions? You would like to see it in front of you.
I think so. I'd want to I'd want a good.
Removal of the of the six.
If it were the six trees and you're waiting till these others become a hazard, then you don't need to see that.
No, if they're immediate, if they're immediate issues, immediate hazards, then we don't.
Cut and run.
Okay, so.
Come back to us with a good plan.
Okay. I need to just use my judgment on that because I can't wait to say that this is an immediate. I could look at it and I can say, there's a good, there's a chance, but this is all guesswork.
You could also have a give you an arborist report. You know what I mean? Have an arborist look at those trees and say, guess what? These are the trees I recommend.
Because the trees are healthy. The trees are, none of the trees were were in decline. But they're twenty feet from his house and bedrooms up there. And if they did come down, I I look at that as a health, a safety concern.
Or.
You know, they're they're trees this big around. It's it's different if they're birch trees that would hit the roof and.
Bounce off.
Bounce off or go right.
Roll.
I was just gonna add to the, if you can have the arborist out there, instead of taking these trees down, is there any trimming you can do to mitigate your your fear of being attacked by your trees?
It's a good comment. Maybe the other ones he can trim a little bit.
Right. You know, get a few more years out of it.
And that way he doesn't have to spend a lot of additional money except with his arborist.
Where they're leaning away.
Right.
All right. Yep. I was just looking for your advice on that because it was one of those. I'm standing there and I'm like, I don't know. I think.
You're too nice of a guy. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Anybody want to motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll stop adjourn. Do we have a second? Any?
I'll second that motion.
You guys, I'll favor.
Hi.
I'm.
Martin. I sent you that.
You did?
This is the video.
Yeah.
Seven fifty-eight.